To the Town of Abingdon, Virginia Planning Commission Regular Meeting. We appreciate your interest and we encourage public participation in our meeting. Your comments are important to our decision-making process. Please note that there will be opportunities during the meeting for you to address the commission members. The first opportunity will come if there's a public hearing on the agenda when the chairman declares the hearing open for comment. The second opportunity to address the commission will come near the end of the agenda when the chairman will inquire if anyone wishes to address the members of the commission. Anyone addressing the commission will approach the podium, give your first and last name, and your complete physical address. Comments must be limited to three minutes. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Austin?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Thompson?
Present.
Mr. Pennington?
Present.
Mr. Sprohl?
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
And Mr. Schu.
All right, next item, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, March 24th, 2025. These are in your packet. Are there any edits or comments? If not, do we hear motion to approve?
I have to make a motion that we approve this submitted.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second. As there's no discussion, would you read the rule?
Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Next item, public comments for items not on the agenda. Has anyone signed up? Okay, thank you. Okay, item A, Certificate of Appropriateness. Leslie Maris, 216 Volkersen Street, Abingdon, Virginia, 24210. Applicant, Jeffrey Neal, 407 East Main Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Owner, Certificate of Appropriateness for freestanding signage located at 407 East Main Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Parcel 014-3-1. Staff report.
Leslie Maris, applicant, and Jeffrey Neal, owner, have requested approval of her certificate of appropriateness to install a freestanding sign near the entrance. A little background, the first floor of the building is occupied by the Virginia Department of Health, and the second floor of the building is occupied by Abingdon MMA. The applicant proposes to install a non-illuminated metal-faced freestanding sign with two wooden posts painted blue on the right side of the south entrance of the property to match the existing freestanding sign structure that the Virginia Department of Health utilizes. The sign will have a top portion with a size of 30 inch by 48 inch and a bottom portion with a size of 12 inch by 48 inch for a total area of 14 square feet. The sign will have a white background, black lettering, and a blue and white logo, and the height of the wooden post will be seven feet. And then this proposed sign does meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And so that VDH sign will remain, they're just adding something that kind of replicates that, kind of on the other side of that entrance.
Okay.
Any questions?
Does the applicant want to speak? If that one is here? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
It's very nice, it meets all the requirements of the ordinance, both in size, appears color-wise and all, to be appropriate. So I would make a motion we approve the certificate of appropriateness as stated.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
All right, it's my understanding that the second one, COA II, was removed from the agenda, so we'll move to item three. Certificate of Appropriateness, Logan Schalk, 183 Harris Lane, Marion, Virginia, 24354. Applicant, Abingdon Development LLC, 238 West Main Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Certificate of Appropriateness for updating the Abingdon Commons Comprehensive Sign Plan located at 238 West Main Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Parcel 012-1-127. Staff report.
So the existing Abingdon Commons Comprehensive Sign Plan, if you remember, that was proposed and approved in August of 2023, and then that was amended in November of 2023. So they're here today to amend it again. So for that archway hanging signage seen on that east elevation, they were approved for six signs measuring 4.5 square feet for each one, and now they're asking for like circular signs that are four by four feet. And they're going to have that as replacements for each of those rectangular ones, and then they'll have additional three that are on that front northeast elevation. And then so they also have two designs, as you can see on the screen, for Semolina's and then Sai Sushi, that they are wanting to put up on two of those nine proposed. And then for window signage, they were recently approved. At the November meeting, they had three signs proposed to be painted on that says Abingdon Commons, and then also they had a black strip with aqua color on the bottom. And then they also had the projecting sign. So at this time, all they had installed was the projecting sign, and they have not painted on. And they are wanting to remove the painted signs and put on the window decals. So they're proposing nine window decals. The east three window panes and west three window panes will each measure five feet by three and a half feet, so 17.5 square feet. And then the three middle window panes will measure two feet by three and a half feet for seven square feet. And then 19.25 square feet, and then another seven square feet. And then each window pane will display each individual business on that building. And then for freestanding signage, they were approved for two monument signs that were perpendicular to West Main Street and Renssberg Drive, near both entrances. And then each monument sign structure was approved with a one foot by six inch tall brick base. And then, so they are wanting to, they haven't installed that brick base, they just have that concrete foundation, and they're wanting to match that with the brick columns that you see on Abingdon Commons on that northeast elevation. And that is what they are proposing, so it would be that nine circular signs. And then those will display each business that's located within. They'll be removing the six rectangular signs, and then there's two designs, Semolina's and Sai Sushi, that will be placed on those. And then they want to remove the painted signage and then put window decals. And then lastly, for that base for both monument signs, they want to just remove that brick. They preferred to have that concrete base. Any questions? And the applicant is here to speak on that, too.
My only question is, what is a 48 by 48 pound sign mean?
What is it?
What does a 48 inch by 48 inch circular sign mean?
So it's basically, the diameter is four feet, four feet, but circular. So it's not like, it's just a four-foot diameter sign.
Forty-eight by forty-eight?
Yes.
Yeah, 48 inch diameter.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm an engineer. I need the actual definition.
I asked this question earlier, relative to Gabe, as far as a comprehensive sign plan, the comprehensive sign plan. This is the third or fourth time we've addressed this building. But, I mean, it just seems like it's a fluid situation. They just keep coming back, time and time again, to change the requested signage. And I guess my question goes back to the original purpose of a comprehensive sign plan, providing flexibility somewhat, and making sure that I understand, because the way I like things is that, you know, don't make it subjective. You know, it's whatever the code specifies, and then, you know, that way the applicant knows what to comply with. Under the comprehensive sign plan, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, tell me what the definition of a comprehensive sign plan is?
So pretty much they can ask for a combination of signs, whether they're within our guidelines, or they can ask for a little bit more, as long as it's a cohesive sort of design for a specific site. And so, and the applicant can speak to this in a sense where I think this is more kind of, they've figured out, they've been in there for about a year or so now, and they've seen what's kind of worked and hasn't worked, so they're looking to kind of bring in that sort of unified design with the signs, but, you know, to meet what they're looking to kind of achieve with what they found has been what they need to improve upon, what's worked and what hasn't worked. So, comprehensive sign plan, it is a fluid thing, sometimes things change with how circumstances happen. And, but they can have, you know, if the commission sees fit to have more signage per square footage for each type of sign, if they feel it's appropriate for that building, how it fits into that building. If you feel that the signs are too big for that specific building, and these buildings are case-by-case basis, you can, you know, limit that signage, or if you feel that's appropriate, is, you know, this is a bigger building, one that we have on East Main Street, that you might see, okay. They're asking for comprehensive sign plan, they can ask for a little bit more signage. That's kind of the benefits of going for a comprehensive sign plan, you can get maybe more signage in terms of the number and the size, again, depending on a case like these cases.
Have we actually calculated what square footage they're entitled to?
They can ask for, you mean, just by going by our guideline?
Correct.
They can, I'm pretty sure they can ask for as much as possible if they wanted to. It's, you kind of go off, based off the zoning ordinance of what's in the central business district.
Which is limited by your lineal footage.
Yes, so it's, because it's different, so like Semolina's or Sai Sushi, if they were just in that spot, they're allowed to have their own freestanding sign, their own projecting sign, their own wall sign if they really wanted to go by themselves. So comprehensive sign plans also kind of like eliminating all that excessive signage. Even though like it is laid out where it does seem excessive, each of those businesses do have, by our zoning ordinance, the right to have multiple signages. So projecting, wall, freestanding, each individually.
Can you tell us, you know, how the total square footage of this revision compares to what has been approved previously?
Um, all I could say is from, just knowing from the projecting signs, is it's going to increase because 4.5 square feet for each one is now going to approximately 12.6 square feet, and there's nine of them now instead of six. I-
Well, and I didn't know how much difference there was between the painted signage that had originally been approved versus the area for the window decals.
Yeah, so the painted was 93 square feet, and then the windows, let's just say it's less than 50 square feet for the window decals.
Okay.
Just less than 50 square feet.
And see, one of the aspects, whenever they were before us previously, everything was pretty much uniform, you know, not only in size, you know, but also in color. One of the reasons that we ended up changing, I think the Abingdon Commons on the Main Street side, was there was a change in the brand that the developer wanted to use, you know, in the color there. If I'm understanding correctly now, instead of a uniform design, the size is one thing, but then you get into the colors and the different designs. There is no regulation. I mean, the two signs that are used as examples here, you know, are different colors from what previously was presented.
Yeah, and that's just, and that's what their proposal is, they were just, it's really, and the applicant can come up, we'll take any time. It's really just for these businesses, what we've been told from some of the business owners, that there, people don't know where they're located right now, and this is just another opportunity for someone to know that they're located in which spot of the building. So yes, it is going against like the color scheme of what they proposed before, but it's now more reaching out for the business owners to promote to the public.
The window signs could run the range from, like, without seeing them, who knows what they would look like at all? They don't have, so if this was approved, they don't have to come in for each individual sign, it's just, it's a-
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard for me to say anything about it, I don't know what the signs look like. I mean, you've got window signs for vape stores, that style, and you've got on-subtle pieces.
Yeah, and beforehand, I mean, it was easy, again, everything was somewhat of a uniform color that, you know, was very nice with the building. And now it doesn't, doesn't appear to be any guidelines.
My name's Nathan Berg, 24383 Walden Road, Abingdon, Virginia, and I'm one of the owners of Abingdon Development. This project is somewhat of a new concept to us, and I believe to the town of Abingdon as well. The town has never had a food hall type development. And as this project has evolved, so has our understanding of how we can make it successful and how we can make the businesses inside that building successful. One of the main comments and feedback that we've received as landlords is that the individual tenants within Abingdon Commons, they don't have enough signage to let the public know that they are in the building. So if you notice right now, in terms of individual brand identity, those can only be found on the two monument signs, one on Renssberg and one on Main Street. And that, to the tenants that are trying to make successful businesses, trying to provide services that benefit the town, trying to, you know, keep Abingdon as a foodie destination, they simply just do not have enough brand identity that's visible to the public from Main Street and from the other, from the exterior of the building. What we would be seeking to achieve by this new proposal, and you're right, Jeff, this would be an amendment to our original comprehensive plan, and part of our goal in doing this is that we don't want to have to continually change and modify. We would like to change it once and have that change be a little bit more durable. And so in doing this, we allow enough signage for each individual tenant within the building to have their own brand identity on the exterior of the building so that people can know that there is Semolina Pizza. That's, he has a great brand, he has a great growing customer base. Or Sai Sushi, which is the new sushi restaurant that's going to be opening at the first of the month. In addition, we have several other tenants that are existing. Girl on the Raven, Hugh Belcher is here representing Girl on the Raven, their coffee shop. Again, if you were to look at the outside of this building, there would be no indicator to tell you as a customer that they are in that building. Additionally, we have several other tenants that are upcoming. Obviously, Appalachia Roots Trading Post, she recently reopened what was Blue Hill Market, so she is hopeful to have some additional brand identity on the exterior of the building. Abingdon Commons relies on people coming to this center that want to enjoy the goods and services that are inside the building. But people simply are not going to be able to know what's in there without having some sort of branding on the exterior of the building. If you look at the window decals, the purpose of that is, again, on the, if you were to look at that right now, looking at a blank facade, there's nothing out there to indicate to you as a passerby what is in there. You have to, it has to be something that catches your eye and draws you into the building. And as much as, from an aesthetic perspective, I love the idea of having a perfectly uniform branded building that's branded as Abingdon Commons. What we've found is that people really don't respond to the Abingdon Commons brand. What they're responding to are the individual businesses inside the building. It's the Semilin, it's just the Appalachia Trading Post, it's the Brazen Raven Coffee. Those people are loyal to their brands because they're offering something. Abingdon Commons is just the platform, it's just the facility, so it doesn't really have any thing to offer. It just has, what it has to offer are the brands inside the building. So having the decals on the windows would give some indicator to people that, hey, you know, right here on this main, in the trans- and we're trying to just keep it in a limited zone, so we're not, we don't want signs plastered all over the building. We want them within a contained area. But that way, above one transom, you can say Semolina Pizza, above another transom, you can say Sai Sushi, Girl on the Raven Coffee, other vendors that are coming, Appalachia Trading Post, all these other vendors that are wanting to open businesses in here, but they're very concerned, let me repeat this, they're very concerned with not having enough traffic, and that's been a problem. And in order for us to make this successful, I really feel like this is critical. So I'm, we're asking for this change for the benefit of the businesses inside.
How many businesses can go in there?
Nine.
So you're, what you're requesting is not only nine signages on the front, on Main Street, but also in every table?
Absolutely. And I think if you look at any other shopping center in town, the businesses within that shopping center expect to have a sign, their own signage.
I can tell you, I've probably gotten 20 or 25 pizzas, and I had no idea there's a coffee shop in there. I'm so embarrassed, I just never, I just go in that side door, pizza.
That hurts his feelings.
I'm sorry.
We really-
Well, yeah. Yeah, you wouldn't really be able to see it, you know?
Yeah, I've never-
If you're coming in that other side.
Right. And I don't think there is, I don't think vape shops are allowed in this, at this location. And it's also not allowed by our own personal standards.
I guess what I'm saying, like in the picture that's up on the screen now, on the, kind of the left, there's the three kind of window signs at the bottom there. And so if you had something like that, it's one thing versus like the round signs you have in here, they're pretty simple and nice. If that was the window sign, like I don't know what the intention is with the window signs, is it just literally the brand logo of the business, like, yeah, or?
Yeah, so it would, if you go back, I mean, I, two of those signs-
Like those?
That's what will be in the windows.
Okay.
That's what will be in the windows or the hanging?
In the hanging, so they'll, that way they'll have, Semilin and Sai Sushi will have visibility on Main Street, and then also along Cummings and coming from that direction. So on both, it has, the building has essentially three facades, and so that way they would have brand identity on both vantage points.
So to me, that, you know, a four-foot diameter of these two makes a lot of sense. You know, that's, and I guess if no, if you can't picture four feet, it's, those tiles are two by four, so if you take two tiles-
I mean, those are going to be big signs.
They're going to be, yeah, they're going to be big. And then on the front with the window signs, is the intent to put a round one in that box, or are you literally going with rectangular ones?
It somewhat depends on the individual's brand. So I can't say with, you know, I can't look in the future and say what every brand and logo will look like.
It seems there needs to be a coordination, though, because if you, if you have nine different brands, you've got wildly different things that wouldn't even look good together at all.
Correct. And I mean, I don't, I don't know how you're going to pinpoint as you're driving by, you know, scan real quickly and hopefully keep your eyes on the road, nine different signs.
We rely heavily on foot traffic.
It just seems there's got to be some commonality.
And as far as Main Street, I mean, you've got monument signs from Main Street also. And it sounds like you're going to take something very similar to whatever that company's brand is that's on that monument side, and you're going to interpret that into either a round sign or a window decal.
Yes, that's true, yeah. And to the, and may you correct me if I'm wrong here, you were talking about the shape and different types of branding. So, in their comprehensive sign plan, they're just asking for it to be circular signs, so that brand will have to fit into that circular size. Right. So just when you're thinking of a different type of logo, I'm just going to say of the different ones, there's still going to have to be a circular sign that's this thing, and they're going to have to make their brand fit into that size. Right, it'll, there'll be physical- Right, it'll, it'll, there'll be physical metal signs. You know, made by Jerry signs. And they have to put their vinyl signage on that round sign. So the signs, these round signs will go up long before we have any specific tenants. And until we have a tenant for that specific sign, then a generic description will go up on there, you know, something similar to what we currently have. So it would be, you know, market, whatever.
Yeah, bakery or.
Exactly, yeah.
I figured I'd just throw it in there because it seems like maybe it was going towards whatever brand, however they wanna shape their brand.
Yes, so we're.
And it's not gonna be that, it's gonna be just their, these circular signs will stay circular no matter the brand, it's just they have to fit their brand into that.
Exactly. And, and the, and the intention on the Main Street sign with the, the sign decals would be a similar, our intention is similar in that we, we're saying you have a bounded rectangular shape that you have to fit into. Now, do we make those round, does it have to be a round decal? I'm, I'm open to that, that doesn't, that's, that's.
But they're gonna have to create a rectangular sign for your monument anyway.
They are, so it just seemed like a good fit. Exactly, it just seemed like a good, yeah, exactly. This is the box you have to work in.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it, I mean, yeah, I know you need signage, that's, that's fine. It's just, to me, you could get nine wildly different things up there.
And that's what we hope for.
Really wouldn't.
And I don't see.
I mean, we're hoping for.
I mean, graphically, like just.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You get, you get two round ones, a rectangle one, a square one, a round one again, it's just like, I don't know. And it may not be a concern to everyone else.
Space wise Nate.
Yeah.
So it makes sense in terms of the six that go along the, because I'm assuming, you know, the ones that hang there, the shop right behind it. They're in the front where you've got three, is that three different distinct shops? Or you're just trying to get nine places to hang signs?
It would, well, they'll.
Well, but even, but is the, the, the six along the wall, that's directly where you're going?
They'll be rough.
There's three in the front, you're not directly going in that door.
Right, so they'll be roughly correlated so that it kinda logically makes sense. So the, the one farthest towards Delta Blues is gonna be Sai Sushi. And then you have Similina. Because that's generally in the direction that those businesses will be located. The ones a little further up, like over the, you know, the, the bay furthest to Main Street would be Brazen Raven, because he's roughly in that location. Now, there'll be additional businesses inside the space. For example, I would, you know, to the right of the Abingdon Commons arch sign, that round one would be the Appalachia Trading Post. And then there'll be two additional ones that, that are TBA. They're, they're, they're people that we are speaking with now, but we don't have anything.
But you're not walking directly into the sign to the spot?
No, no, you're.
You're just trying to find nine places for nine.
We want it to logically kinda make sense.
Eighteen space.
Exactly, but it also, there's no, physically, because of the physical layout of the building, it's impossible to have it as. Right, exactly.
And I can, and I can attest to what you're saying, is, you know, soy and Sai and Similina is pretty much in the back here, so I was just trying to get you in the neighborhood.
Exactly, that, yeah.
The signs above the spaces here versus what is there, I really don't have a, a concern with. You know, then you've got the monument out front. My confusion is on the Main Street side with all the window signage. I don't, I really don't understand that. You're gonna have nine different signs trying to advertise the different businesses inside, yet if you go through that door, you're actually going through one business to get to these other nine.
Didn't sign it's supposed to be, not just getting them in, but getting you to where you're supposed to be going.
Once you're in.
If the nine spots aren't to the nine spots, then.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Right, once you're in the building, then there'll be interior signage directing people to, to the destination that they're trying to go to. You know, we did have, you know, signage approved for this, for this facade that was for the Abingdon Commons brand, you know, sort of the generic brand, right? And so what, again, the feedback that we're, we have been getting is that our tenants, who are ultimately the ones keeping the doors open, that their desire is to have their own specific business advertised.
Now, this sign's three feet in diameter.
Correct.
That's what was approved, three feet, and now we're going to four feet.
The, the Abingdon Commons, I believe it's, I honestly can't remember.
I think it's three feet.
It's three feet, that won't be painted on.
Oh, that sign stays, but in terms of the painted on Abingdon Commons, another aspect of why we would want it on the glass is that in case businesses change, we need a way of changing the sign out without.
The other item is the base of the monument sign. We need to discuss that.
I don't know, put brick versus. Leave it concrete?
Yep.
We would, our preference would be to leave it concrete. We feel that it would match the rest of the architect better. But there can also be a brick veneer placed on it as well, which is what we had originally proposed.
There's a discussion there. Fair comment, come on in.
I'll let.
Sure. Come on up. And if you would just give us your name and address.
Hugh Belcher, three fifty East Main Street.
Thank you.
So, I'm one of the owners of the Girl on the Raven and the Brazen Raven, which is in the Commons. And, yeah, I'd just like to speak to the need of additional signage. We've been here for a year and a half now. And, you know, this was sort of a, a land breaking undertaking for Abingdon in that it was a, a common area for businesses to locate. It's amazing in its scope, took a historical building and something that a lot of people would've just torn down and hoped that they could sell for something else. But it preserved the integrity of the historic locale. And, you know, it was a, it was kind of a test, kinda tested waters. And there's, trust me, there's been a lot of people, a lot of investors, potential investors in Abingdon who've watched what's happened here. And, you know, I'm, I'm not on the inside of what the movers and the shakers wanna see happen in Abingdon, but I would think that this would be something that would be an attractive thing for other people to look to, to move into Abingdon, which is take, taking a historic building, remodeling the use of it, retaining a lot of the historic features of the place, but yet bringing in new customers, new, the younger generation, let's say, which I'm not a part of anymore. So it, it was very exciting and that's why I agreed to be a part of it with our coffee and also including new things, ice cream and other things. And I don't mind to tell you, I don't know if Nathan would want me to say this or not, but it has not worked for us. And I think that one of the major reasons that it hasn't worked for us is that there is no signage. I still talk to people every day, a year and a half into this thing, and I say, have you been up to our place in the Commons? People who have heard of the Commons say, I didn't know you're in there. And this has not, this has been in the last few weeks, this has come up, this has been since we've opened. And yet it's still, and I, I have a pretty loud mouth, I tell a lot of people about us. But I would say that there is a disproportionate number of the community not even speaking to tourists who come into town, who think these are law offices or a hospital. And we're in desperate need of curb appeal. And I completely understand that there is a historic nature of Abingdon that we wanna preserve, I get it, I understand that. But if you go up and down the street, right and left of the Commons, you're gonna see all sorts of advertising in the windows and on the street that is, you know, maybe not exactly what we would like to see in each and every case. But I think that, you know, myself and people involved with the Commons wanna have this place preserved and classy and, you know, we're talking about, do the signs need to be circular or, you know, we have a rectangular space that needs to be filled? So we say, you know, that that rectangular space has to be filled. I don't know, I, I just, I feel like there's a real potential of something here that could work. And I know that there's several people who've invested a lot more into this place than I have. And I'm not speaking of Nathan, I'm talking about other people inside the Commons. And, you know, I think the town's waiting to see, and I think that other potential future investors are waiting to see if this place can work or not. And I firmly believe that one of the key elements that we need to do is get some signage up so that people can see that this, these are not law offices, these are not apartments, they're not, it's not medical, you know? And let people know that we're there, yeah. Scott, you just said you didn't know we were there.
Yeah, I, I can't tell you how many times I've been there, I've been there, that pizza and this other place.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know.
So, anyway, my.
I, I have been to the Girl on the Raven, that's a nice place.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And I, and I'd just like to finish by saying, I firmly appreciate everything that you guys do, each one of you. This is a very necessary board. But I would just say, you know, work with us and let us get some signage out somehow. We may, we may need to address this again in six months or a year. You know, it's, it's kinda like, you know, trying to, to figure it out as we go, I guess. This is, this is something that's new. And I, I think that one of the things that may have hamstrung us a little bit is trying to keep it so Abingdon and so, you know, the Commons without understanding a, a need to say, yeah, you're, you're eighteen, you're twenty-five, you're, you're thirty-five, you're a tourist, come in, there's something that's great here, just get inside these walls and it's here waiting on you. That's it. Unless you wanna ask me something?
I don't question anything you've said about the need for additional signage, I, I understand that fully.
Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Mr. Berg, let me ask you a question, if I could. These are forty-eight inch diameter circular signs. And I just throw this out, I'm just one person here. Could you, and I keep looking at these ceiling tiles, my friend pointed at, talking about the size that that sign actually is, could he live with thirty-six inches?
I, yeah, I, I don't think that would necessarily be, you know, a major issue. I think, in terms of just the, the scale of, it's a big building and those archways are pretty tall, so, you know, forty-eight inches does look a, a bit smaller when you're looking at it in, in the context of the rest of the building. But, you know, we're, we're certainly open to the suggestions that, that this board might have. None of this is, is something where we're wanting to be dogmatic about it in any way. We're open to, to your feedback.
Well, but my question would be, how close to scale is, you know, are the, so the, the signs that are.
The front ones, the ones.
They look too small.
To the right, so that door in the middle, what, seven oh tall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's about, it's about the scale on either side of that.
It's fairly, yeah, I'm not gonna.
The ones down at the end probably aren't, they're probably a little smaller than actual, but I, I think the one that, especially the one that says forty-eight by forty-eight is probably dead on, pretty close.
Okay.
I wouldn't want Scott to get his measuring tape out there and scale these drawings, but I think they're pretty close.
Knowing that your nine circular signs match up with whatever the rect, on the Main Street side, I'm assuming that if you, if you take in consideration both of those together, there's enough linear square footage? When we're talking about, if you're talking about nine. When you're talking about the same sign twice. There's enough, there's enough, in terms of what you all would say, this is approved within.
Well, again, a current sign plan's allowed to, allow them to have more signage, you don't have to be within the guidelines for something. I will say just for in terms of how long this building is, just to kind of give you a, I'll just start from. Talking like probably two hundred and fifty. So it's quite.
So well within.
It's quite, it's quite long for a building.
It's a big, it's a pretty big building.
It's probably one of our longest ones, I'd probably have to say on West Main. As you can see, it's kind of.
But at the end of the day, with this proposal, the request that you bring, every one of those tenants would have four signs.
That's broad.
Two monument signs, you know, frontage signs on, we'll call it tenement street side, you know, it's not a tenement, but, and then also on Main Street.
That, yes, that's correct.
I, I don't know how many other businesses around have, you know, four signs. No, I mean, not, I mean, and that, I guess, my frustration's not as much with the application as it's just trying to understand the plan itself, the comprehensive plan, and that if it's flexible, really no guidelines, then really why are we even here?
Well, it's up to the commission to see, like case by case basis, what's appropriate. So each building's different in a sense, so some buildings like this might require more signage, some that they come, that are smaller than this one, they might come for a lot of signage and you say, no, that's not appropriate for that building and where you're at. So it's kind of up to the board to determine what you think is appropriate for an area and a building. A current sign plan just allows a building such as this that has a, more of a multi-tenant space to really allow for a design of either whether it's the shape, doesn't necessarily have to be the design of the logos, but the size of the sign, the shape of it.
Ordinarily, we're. Ordinarily, we're presented with colors on, you know, materials, everything on every sign. Now, are we leaving this up to staff then?
You can.
Under this to, to approve?
I think they'll mention that these would be metal, I believe, or what, what material?
Metal, metal, metal.
Well, I mean, it, just as far as, I mean, go back to the Main Street side, and I don't mean to be problematic here, guys. You know, the colors, you know, relative to what you're gonna see on Main Street. And I understand the brand of whatever the tenant is, you know, or whoever the tenant is. You know, but you can have literally a variety of different colors along the Main Street. Now, some may say, hey, that's, that's attractive, that's eye catching, and that may get you in, and that may be the case. You know, but, we don't, every other individual, every other application, you know, comes to it, comes to us relative to here are the colors, here are the designs, things of this nature.
So this one, that's why there's no really specific color, because it's based on the brand or the business that's gonna be in there? But you would still be looking at, you would be making sure the material's the same? You know, if somebody came in, that's another business in here that said, no, I want this, the circular sign to be, I don't know, I'm just gonna say wood. Then we would not, you, they would have to come back here to have you look at it.
We're not gonna say anything after this.
Well, no, if they wanted to change something, if some tenant wanted to come in and change the material of the sign, the shape of the sign, the size of the sign, the illumination of the sign, which in our. of the sign, uh, which in our guidelines, which you, Scott, I think you brought up about lighted signs, like how vape shops usually do, we restricted, you know, lights in the windows and everything, you know, to lighted signs. So we've covered that from previous point, so.
Yeah, I was more, I'm at like the-
Oh, yeah.
Neon thing that says vape and letters.
Yeah.
Neon green letters. Not necessarily lit.
Gotcha.
But, you know, it's just, I don't know what's going to go in this.
So it's more like the colors you would leave up to bran, the branding, but you would still have control over the material, the size, the shape, uh, the type of illumination, all those other kind of ones. Um, it's just maybe the colors. For this specific request, because it's more based on the branding, not just because it's one whole place like the Commons was and how the, how Nate's describes that, the, how, what he's heard from the tenants have been, they need signage for their own business, not someone with the Commons. The Commons is just more of a, a house for them to, a housing area for them to be in than that. And so they're looking for more of their signage in that case.
I find it very difficult, if not impossible, to vote to approve these window decals that it is showing here without having the additional information that Mr. Johnson's talking about. I'm not saying I'd never be in favor of it, but just looking at it as it's set up there on the picture, I find it difficult.
What would, uh, because we want to accommodate your need for information as much as, as we possibly can. So, so I know, you know, what would be, uh, what would be something satisfactory amount of infor, information?
I'd like to see what it would look like with the decals from each business that you have there now. And, and, you know, something like I'm looking at on the screen now, but actually have those signs with the colors, everything on those to get an idea of what they look like.
What, um, in terms of businesses that we can't disclose yet, what would, what would be a satisfactory placeholder?
Well, you got, I guess you can put up, what, five or six, probably. But based on what I see here, four or five or six. Just wondering if we can, but those up there and the other ones would just be white squares or something. Maybe, maybe that would show.
And as the, if the, if there's turnover within the businesses, would they need to get approval every time we change a sign? I'm just thinking operationally how this would work. Well, if you're not going to include in the comprehensive sign plan, then yes, they would have to come back for you for the window signs. Uh, now, if you include in the sign, comprehensive sign plan, then they would just, as long as they meet the dimensions, that's what's approved in the material and all the other kinds of design elements, then they would just go for a sign from them. But again, it's up to the board. Right. I guess I'm a little confused because I thought the purpose of the comprehensive sign plan would be to have something that you, that you wouldn't have to have approval for every time you change a sign. We're happy to do that, but I guess at that point, we would, would we just remove the comprehensive plan and just go back to a, a regular process? You could keep the signs in there, but the window signs could not be part of the comprehensive sign plan? That's kind of up to the board. So part of the building would be under the comp plan and part of it went into- Part of the bin, yeah. Then you're kind of doing a half and half, which that could be confusing for the tenants and, you know, as time goes on. One thing I, it seems like maybe the whole, and Nate, you can, this is something we talked about before in a sense, we come up with a design. And so if they're open to it, uh, but, um, is that, is taking up the whole windows face the issue? Or is it the, or just having the different colors in, in?
It, the window decals, just to me, when you look at it, and we've already made comment about coming down Main Street, it would be very difficult to discern if you are driving down Main Street from these signs exactly what you're going to focus on, other than hopefully the vehicle in front of you. But it looks more, for lack of a better term, haphazard.
And I agree, wholeheartedly. I don't have any concerns with any of the signage and the archways, anything of that nature. Um, and then you've got both, um, monument signs, you know, that also, and I understand the need for additional signs. I just don't understand, you know, from a uniform standpoint, up and down Main Street, signs of this nature, um, in approving those cards launch, you know, where we don't have any control over what is on Main Street right there. This is the first time, I think, you all have ever presented. And I understand it's a learning process. But you've ever presented anything on the windows themselves, everything was above all the facades and, um, you know, very, for lack of a better term, very classic. I just don't, I don't understand these.
And I agree with you, Jeff. I mean, I, I'm a designer and from a, as, with the eye of a designer, I like the way the other ones look better.
I think it's-
Right? It looks nice. It looks cohesive.
What you've all done with that building, you really already committed it as an asset.
I appreciate it.
After the town of Abingdon and, uh, you know, converting the old ADP, uh, what's in there right now, um, I think you've done an exceptional job. I don't think these window signs add that.
I think, but I, I let the designer and me get, get a little too far out ahead of the, of the, the responsibility I have as a landlord to the tenants, though. And at some point, I have to listen to what they're asking for and really needing to make themselves successful. Because I could have the most beautiful, empty building in the world, and that doesn't do anybody any good.
Yeah, dude. Put it back up here.
Yes.
Yeah. Video, sir.
That is-
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I, I think we, we're at a place where we're trying to figure out if we want to do what was allowed at the Meadows, or whether we want to do what was maintained at the shopping center, I can't think of the name of it right now, in Johnson City, where Freddy's is and Powell's and, uh, it's out, it's out on the corner of, uh, you know where I'm talking about? Uh, it's on the corner of Franklin. Don't know. Okay. Anyway, so they all had to maintain the colors of that shopping center. It's, uh, brick and an off-colored kind of latte, kind of, I mean, I'm, I sell coffee, so it's latte.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a brown, two off colors. Everything in that area is the same color. Uh, at the Meadows, uh, there was a big deal about it. I'm sure you remember whether Powell's was going to be able to use their colors or not. And it's not just Powell's. It's Firestone and Ace and Jersey Mike's. If we take this route that you're suggesting, then I think, unless you can correct me, and I'm open to correction, my wife will tell you that, uh, then Jersey Mike's would have to be the colors of the Abingdon colors, the, the brick and maybe an off color of the brick a little bit. And Firestone would have to do the same thing. And Powell's would have to do the same thing. By the way, Powell said that that's the last time they will ever enter into a, a development that they can't use their colors. And, and I'm not saying it's not, it's not the right thing.
No, I don't, I don't think the colors on the oval signs, you know, are any concern. But it's, in my mind, it's the window signs. So, yeah. This becomes just a lot more cluttered looking.
So if you, you look at this, these guys, these signs right here, they're all white backgrounds with the business on them. And so what I'm saying is those window stickers need to be, they're all beige with your logo on there, or they're all light blue with your logo on there. They're not like just set nine different colors.
Sure. I get that.
Nine different background colors. That's all I'm concerned about, really. Is, is there needs to be some-
Continuity.
Uniformity, continuity.
Right.
With, say, the background color or something. I understand you have the logo and you want that.
Sure.
That's fine.
I just, I'm sorry. I, I just think it's important that Firestone is able to keep the integrity of their brand. And that Ace is able to keep the integrity of their brand.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. But, but if you look at those, if you look at those monument signs in most places, they're, they're pretty uniform, even though, I mean, not at like the pinnacle or something, but a lot of them, they want them to be similar color-
Absolutely.
Background and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
I think I, what I would, and I, this is kind of a design problem, right? And so I think what I would do, here's what I would propose, is that if, at your pleasure, approve the, the circular signs that we presented, we come back to you with a revised window decal option that does provide that uniformity. And I think the way to do it, Scott, would be to create a standard border and background and, and then that way, then they can have flexibility within that-
Right. And then they can stick anything on there.
Exactly.
But you've got a nice, uh, frame or, or background-
Right.
That says, this is one building and we're all in this building.
Yeah.
Not like totally wild.
Right. That way it's not a-
And that way, those decals end up looking kind of like a, a transit window kind of thing.
Precisely, yeah.
Get it on top of-
It'll give you a spandrel-
That's bad, love.
It'd be like a spandrel glass effect.
Yes.
Whatever it is with a logo on the spandrel glass.
Yeah.
Except you're doing a whole sticker.
Yeah. And so I think, I, I can create a mockup of what that would look like. I think that kind of balances that, um, that, because they do need flexibility to have their own colors and brand on there.
Yeah.
But again, it's, 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 it's kind of-
Within a common ground.
Exactly, yeah.
In fact, you might think about that spandrel glass, that kind of greenish spandrel glass, which is similar to the paint.
It is. As soon as you said that, that's what I thought.
And that might be appropriate as a background, uh, or at least for what I, I see on here.
I think that would-
May have a logo that would clash, but.
Yeah, well, I'll have to play around with some colors, but I think what you're, I think that, that would work well. I think that would kind of, so we can table this, I'm totally fine with that. We can come back with a, with a revised design. I would like to, for Logan's sake, with Sai Sushi, he's, he's trying to have some grand openings. So I would, I would love to be able to have, let him go ahead and put his round signs up, move forward with that, and then we can come back with this, if that's acceptable. Just make sure that- Yeah. We're good with motions and things like that. So you're wanting to maybe table just the window signage and have them, have the cer, everybody have the circular signs that you guys have proposed? That's correct. Two, two things, it would be the-
And the, the monument.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes. The monument base and then the circular signs.
So, knowing that, we have any questions?
And we're, we're staying with four by four.
Yeah.
You're okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I really, really appreciate that. This is great. I'm just getting this back forth, feedback is invaluable. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
We have a motion. I make a motion that we approve the COA as submitted with the exception that we table the window signage portion. Um, so we are approving, uh, the four by four circular signs over the archway in addition to the recommendations on the monument signs.
Second look. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, could we just walk through, please?
Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Uh, next, we move on to a public hearing and, uh, I guess I have to open the public hearing? Declare it.
Got a soccer game to be at.
Understood, understood. Thank you. Uh, so this, this public hearing is about a special use permit. Alan Shope, Appalachian Trading Post and Auction Company, seven eighty-three East Main Street, Abingdon, Virginia, two four two one zero. Applicant, Ben Frizzell, fifteen oh one Bluff City Highway, Bristol, Tennessee, three seven six two oh, owner. Special use permit for an auction sales business located in the general business district B two, located at seven eighty-three East Main Street, parcel zero zero seven dash one dash three. Stafford Gort, first, please.
Uh, so Alan Shope of Appalachian Trading Post and Auction Company and Benjamin Frizzell, the owner, have requested approval of a special use permit to allow an auction sales business in the general business district B two. Um, currently, the Appalachian Trading Post and Auction Company occupies the building addressed seven eighty-three East Main Street, within the Wolf Hill Shopping Center, as only a store, a general store selling flooring supplies. Um, the general store is a buy right use within a general business district or B two as stated in the ordinance. So with this, um, the ordinance defines an auction sales business as an occasional or periodic commercial activity held groups or sellers renting space on a short-term basis to display, barter, or sell secondhand goods to the public, or one or more sellers bring goods for auctioning to the public. Um, an auction sales business is only allowed in the general business district with the approval of a special use permit. Um, so the applicant proposes, proposed business is located, uh, in the building with a sixty feet in length, allowing for a maximum area of a hundred and thirty square feet of wall signage in the B two district. Um, the applicant proposes to install a thirty-two square foot, non-illuminated metal sign located above the front entrance door. The sign will have a black background and use the color gold and white for the lettering and logo. It also proposes window signage, and the window signage is allowed ten percent square feet in the B two district. Um, the square footage of all windows and doors combined is two hundred and forty-seven square feet, allowing for a maximum area of window signage to be twenty-four point seven square feet. And right now, um, you can see that there is, um, a design there. Um, right now, the applicant hasn't fully measured it. That's, um, some of the rendering he may use. Um, he will have to submit a signed permit to us showing that it's twenty point, twenty-four point seven square feet or less on that. Um, for the parking, the minimum all-street parking requirements for an auction sales business, um, is not specifically stated within our zoning ordinance. Um, according to one of our sections, um, we are allowed to, um, have it next to another use that is of similar characteristics. So we would use it as a retail store, uh, so one parking space for each two hundred and fifty square feet of usable floor area. Um, so the business would have to have thirty-four parking spaces. Um, that whole development there, they have three hundred striped spaces shared between the entire development. And then for, uh, special use permit findings, um, two of the other businesses that share the building are Roses and Box Drop Mattress Outlet, um, and they're both established as retail stores. The current business when the, within the building is Appalachian Trading Post and Auction Company, and the business is currently only doing retail, which is a buy right use in the town of Abingdon zoning ordinance. The parcel adjacent to the north side of the proposed business is Abingdon High School. Then there, there is an existing dense tree line along the northern property line of the proposed business, screening this location from the, uh, high-density residential district or R three. And then the existing tree line should remain intact to preserve the natural screening. The parcels adjacent on the east side of the proposed, uh, the proposed business are owned and utilized by the Washington County School Board. The parcels are used for storing buses and other vehicles. Trees and bushes are sparsely dispersed along the east property line. Uh, the parcels adjacent on the west and south side of the proposed business are general business district B two and limited industrial M one, uh, which are equal to more intense use districts. Um, then we also came up with a few, uh, standards and, um, recommendation, uh, for conditions. Um, a lot of these are kind of following, um, a lot of the conditions that we proposed for other special use permits. Um, so the first one is storage of items for the business may not be just, uh, placed in front of the rear or rear of the building as seen from the public right of way. Uh, window signage is limited to ten percent square feet. Like I said, that twenty-four point seven square feet total for his window signage. And then the window signage shall not be illuminated. All proposed signage to be installed must be submitted with a signed permit application into the community development department and be issued a signed permit before any installation of signage can occur. Um, no architectural lighting may be around the windows, door, or building facade, and no music shall be played after five P M. Monday through Sunday. And these are just conditions set by staff, so you can add, um, or take away any conditions that you see fit. Any questions?
Thank you. Uh, the applicant would like to speak. If you would give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Alan Shope, uh, seven eighty-three East Main Street. We are a service that we offer to the community. We are a service that we offer to the community. We've been, actually been doing it 13 years. We have located back to Abingdon, though we, we were not in the town of Abingdon last time we were on Lee Highway, April 13th. And for many years, we have been able to handle people that, you know, if you've ever been through the situation of inheriting property, whether it's real estate, so on and so forth, I mean, we, we are in a, a large-scale gallery. We do internet and live auctions simultaneously. And from gold to silver to the real estate itself, collectibles. I mean, we, we deal on a lot of different, a lot of different items. And it is a service that a lot of people need. I mean, it's, I didn't realize that when I first started, okay? I grew up in the auction business with my father, and I wound back up in it. But it is, we're, we're willing to come into Abingdon, we're going to grow this to a, a lot further than we ever thought. Just the time that we've been opening, you know, opening, selling the flooring, the people that used to come to our sales in Abingdon that wouldn't travel to Damascus has been, I mean, people are really in open arms, and we're, we're proud to be back. I have no reservation with everything that's been offered to us, we'll, they buy it. We also, when we do have the large estate auctions, we bring people in from everywhere. I mean, when we done Mr. Ellis's, so the shop as an example, I sold the, you know, families, all the collectibles and everything. We had people from the West Coast fly in and stayed in town and ate in town, and, I mean, we do bring business other than what we're doing. I mean, people travel for this, and we've got an amazing sale coming up, and I just, I ask each and one of you for your support and help.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
All of these are conducted indoors.
Yes, now occasionally, we will, if we are selling the real estate and it's in abundance to bring to the gallery, we will do onsite sales. I don't know if that's an issue with the town of Abingdon or not, if there's a scheduled estate auction. I, I mean, we've had, we've had them, but I didn't know that, you know, brought to our awareness that we'd have to have a special permit for that.
You're questioning the town, I think, I can't address that.
I don't believe so. If anything, I don't believe it would be, if it is, it's a specialty of mine, even though given what we're discussing with the others. When you mean like onsite, you mean like at the property itself?
Right, right, I mean, it, sometimes, like I said, I mean, we, mainly farms, I would, you know, throw that out, that there would be, you know, a lot of equipment and stuff like that, that we would rather hold that onsite.
But the majority of what you do is, and I'm going back to one of the things that they say as far as conditions or music, and I'm going with the music actually be played.
That would be after the auction, if we had a real successful sale and we break out the alcohol. That could happen, but we, we'll, we'll keep moving.
All right.
Well, thank you. I guess you mentioned that you have both, you know, online and in-person auctions.
Yes, sir.
You know, but the auctions that you'd be holding here at this property, I mean, like, what kind of capacity do you anticipate?
I would, in, in the past, okay, in Damascus, I'm not comparing that to, I mean, I know it's going to be a lot bigger. We're going to probably have in a neighborhood 175 to 200 people at present at the auction. And on, online, it'll be thousands.
Yeah. And I can tell you, I live over that way, there's plenty of parking out there.
Oh, we got-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and that's something in, in, when I was on Lee Highway, that parking was always an issue. At least that building never, I mean, it looked like a lot of parking. It wasn't, from day one, that was a problem. I mean, people would park everywhere. Now there, and it's lighted, I mean, even if we do do an evening sale, it's, it's everything I've ever looked for, to be honest with you. I didn't see it that way when I first done this, because we got hit with that flood in Damascus. Take a major, major hit. And prior to that, it was COVID. So, I mean, the good Lord just, he keeps looking over us, and now that I've seen this, and I keep looking at it, and I'm like, I feel like we were placed there, to be honest with you. I mean, it's, that's, that's what I feel. So we just, once again, I, I thank you guys, and, you know, just, we'll work with you any way that we have to work with, I mean, it doesn't hurt.
All right.
Let me say a couple of, of concerns that I would voice would be the clientele coming in, the number, and that sort of thing, and this idea of storage of any items that's not, that are not contained within the building. I've been to Mr. Shope's businesses, both when he was on the other end of town and when he's in Damascus, and he's a master, he runs a brake business. I've never seen the wrong clientele around at all, any disturbances or anything along those lines, and I have never seen any storage, attempted storage, or anything like that on the outer portions of his businesses. It's always nice and neat and welcoming to people, so I have no question about what type of business you run here.
Well, this is a good repurpose of that building.
I mean, that building's been empty for at least 10 years. I mean, and, you know, when I first looked at it, it wasn't what I really was looking for. And the more that I looked at it and the traffic, but what got me the most is all the people that's came, that's heard about. We haven't even advertised. That's came in and just welcomed us back to the Abingdon, it's been, it's been wonderful.
All right, well, thank you, and-
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Next, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment upon this, please come forward. Okay, well, if that is the case, I will close the public hearing and move on to discussion and possible motion. Anyone?
I make a lot of motions. I can't today, so, or I shouldn't.
Seems like a reasonable use for that space.
All right, you don't have-
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the request as presented. The staff, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, old business matters not on the agenda, do you?
Um, just one comment.
Yeah.
Just as a reminder, planning commission meeting for next month will be one week earlier, May 19th, September 14th.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else, announcements, anything?
No, I think we sent out our letters for the, just to notify people that they're in the EC, so whoever's owned a property in the EC should have them just to kind of say, hey, here's the process, we're happy to have you in the district and we're here to help.
Okay, great. Okay, well, good. Motion, who adjourned?
Somebody.
Second. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, we'll see you on the 19th.